All right then, let's move straight to our next conversation. The issue of dwindling electricity and power continues to bother the country's populace. To this end, a coalition of electricity unions and civil society organisations has called on the Nigerian senate to call for public hearing on the power sector's performance since 2013. The coalition comprised the National Union of Electricity Employees, the Amalgamated Union of Public Corporations, Civil Service, Technical and Recreational Services Employees, the Renovating Development Initiative and the Citizens Free Service Forum. In a statement issued by the executive director of RDI Philip Jappo in Abuja, the coalition decried the deteriorating electricity situation in the country. He said that the coalition noted that the hike in electricity tariffs and the categorisation of Nigerians into electricity bans have equally created an unnecessary caste system in society. He noted that the coalition instead is seeking the adoption of the public-public partnership model, which has proven to be successful as opposed to privatisation, which they described as inefficient. Now, Biko, yes, even though we have a guest, but let's just quickly talk about this. Calling for a public hearing, you know, on the performance of the power sector, how significant is this and what will it achieve?
I'm not against a public hearing.
Okay.
Because it will bring out all of the problems and there will be suggestions as per what we need to do to, to improve. What I'm opposed to is the, the idea of taking us back to where we used to be.
Okay.
Because the, these NGOs, you know, they are talking about the privatisation that they do not like where the privatisation has gone. This is not something we can do anything about at this stage.
Okay.
There are people who have been calling for the discos, the gencos to be sent packing, but it's not practicable.
Exactly.
The reason people don't want to invest in Nigeria is because they don't know what could happen suddenly. Maybe a new government comes, there's a policy change that will just send them out of business. People don't want to see that happen. Now, we went into privatisation, the unbundling of the power sector. Yes, mistakes were made. Some of the people who inherited the power infrastructure, did not deserve to get, get them. But what can we do at this stage? We have all kinds of problems. One of the big problems we now have is even theft and vandalism.
Now vandalisation is now the...
Of, of power, power infrastructure. That is one big problem that was not there, at least on this biscuit before. So we are contending against that. Look at how much money the minister said they spent to restore power
True.
to those places where vandalism took place. So that is one big problem that some people have created. We have to find a way to solve that problem.
Okay.
Is it through our laws that we are going to find, solve that problem? Or is it by deploying people to man?
To man the...
Power infrastructure? How many of such power infrastructure can we man? When you are driving, you are doing like a cross, um, um, an interstate journey in northern Nigeria. You see a lot of our power infrastructure vandalised. They, they, they will even roll the cables. Sometime maybe they get distracted, they will leave it, they run away. In some cases, they will roll it, cut it away.
Okay.
Thereby putting people in darkness. So we need to sit down and ask ourselves, how can we solve this problem? How can we improve electricity generation? What are the options available? Should we simply look at other electricity generation sources?
Renewable energy, you know.
So this, in my view, is what, um, this kind of, what's it called, the national assembly, the public hearing, can bring forward, not necessarily reversing the privatisation process. No, I don't think that is practicable.
Okay, um, we have a studio guest, we have Professor Yemi Okere waiting for us, but just in one minute, talk to me, this public hearing that we're talking about, how significant is it?
I don't see what it will achieve. Yes, it can bring up some things, but the things that will bring up is things that we've heard several times. We know what the problems, we know what the problems are. We should just try to solve those problems. We know the problems.
We know the problem.
The, the gencos and especially the discourse, we not have enough resources to do what they are supposed to do. We have only one, one grid that breaks down every time. We need to decentralise that. We, we need to find, have better security to protect our energy infrastructures. We know what the problems are. So we should just go ahead and try to solve those problems.
Exactly.
Instead of saying that we want to abort a child that has been born. Privatisation is there, there's nothing they can do about that.
So it's now for us to now re-engineer and get things?
Yes, we move forward to solve the problem. Not that we will say that you want to look into the privatisation that has been done.
All right then, let's stretch this conversation further. Joining us to discuss this is Professor Yemi Okere, SEN, Professor of Energy and Electricity Law, University of Lagos. Good afternoon, professor, and thank you so much for joining us on journalist hangout.
Thank you and good afternoon to...
Yes, professor, this, the matter, we're talking about the issue of public hearing on the performance of the power sector, just like I asked my studio guests here. I'm bringing it back to you, how significant is this? And what will it achieve, the public hearing?
Okay, let me thank you for that important question. I don't know what, what is meant by public hearing. What you guys are doing out there is a kind of public discourse, public hearing, public engagement that we need. It's not a kind of public hearing of about 90 people or 200 people. That's to me is like a monologue. We need a kind of hearing that is public, that brings support, intelligent discourse engagement that is currently happening, that's been happening in your studio, your station and others, but the other radio and TV stations. We need to pull together those fantastic thoughts and suggestions and opinions as in having this segregated discourse somewhere in the convenience or some other districts. It's not going to create the kind of boss engagement that we expect. So this is a kind of public discourse that should be recorded and sustained. I have no problems if certain issues are taken to the national assembly because of expected legislative backing, just on this side. But I like the fact that you guys have started this important conversation. Even the earlier part of the engagement was about energy. Last week, we saw the, the, the mission 300 energy summit in the San Jose area that presently are not happening. We are now discussing how to ensure that 300 million Africans, Asian Africans have access to electricity. And there is a pool of funds in there, 40 billion dollars. The question is, how do we assess the provision? And they're looking at all the options that we are talking about now in terms of gas, gas to power that Mr. Todeu provided and the possible solutions. There are so many things. L N G, mini LNG happened in Kogi, we have five. I'm not sure whether they, they are the state of F I D, which is final investment position. But those are the kind of engagement where we expect to see. We are seeing a kind of increasing activities in the realm of petrol and gas F P G. We are seeing a lot of activities in the realm of C A G for fresh petrol gas. We've seen a lot of activities in the gas to energy, gas to power regime. And at international level, we are seeing no prior original responses in terms of fund. And we are seeing responses at the level of the state, the Nigerian state now. What an ever before, because one of the first steps became that the current administration, Tsunogu administration, was assigning of the electricity act of 2003. Within weeks of the coming on board of President Bala, almost immediately, we started seeing signs that states are now getting involved, though we haven't seen much. We've seen states like Lagos and others now, they've gotten their, 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 their execution, meaning they can now self-regulate electricity vote for generation, transmission and distribution in their respective states. And these are things we predicted almost in 2010, 11, when we said we had issues with the power law. Even up until, we even said Lagos state will have something close to like Lagos state electricity regulatory commission, we said electricity regulatory commission, we said electricity regulatory commission. We saw the future, we assumed today will happen, almost two decades ago, and it's happened. We are with, beyond taking the issue to the national assembly for public hearing to reverse what had been done. I have never conversed reversing the privatisation. I admit the fact that we made mistakes in the privatisation because we were against the manner of privatisation, but they didn't listen. Then we also advised against using the law, which was meant to mitigate the reform. We won against the law to professionalise the power sector. They didn't listen and they felt they couldn't change the law because they just privatise. And it will amount to changing the purpose when pressure goes about to be scored. But it took so long before we could now eventually have the law meant to operationalise the power sector. So now we just start. So what have been the gains since we started recently? We've seen responses at the level of the state. We've seen increased international engagement in terms of funding. We've seen coming on board of private players investing in, in gas production with the mini, mini LNG that we had in Kogi and several other states. And more, we will start to talk. But we still have the problem, like one of your guests said, we know what the problems are. In your studios, we will sit down with the data, we have national grid like 14 in a year. I will have the exact thing. Some will say, oh, to maintain this, we have the exact thing. Why? Because it was easier for us to predict all those stuff because we haven't seen signs that work to prevent the occurrence of those issues are being taken care of. So now, the question is, we still have challenges in terms of national grid, frequent lapses of national grid. But should that happen? The answer is no. We turned the talking of refrigerated grid in the 21st century. That was my argument almost 20 years ago. Now we are responding. But see, take this 13 years responses, simple common sense argument. Now, how much of digital monitoring are within at the level of our transmission infrastructure? How much of early warning, remote sensing devices or technologies are with deployed to curtail this vandalism and theft? Like is already suggested for the, for the energy sector. Now, our food is being monitored digitally so that we know the amount of food that is produced from every oil block and plant. It's durable, it's durable just for us to do the right thing. Of course, I blame it on the regulator because once the government privatises, and I've said it, not for personal interest here, once a government privatises, then the job of the responsible government is to bring on top serious mandate regulators, independent regulators who will get the right thing done. When, when something wrong happens in the, in the power sector, people will not see it, they look at the civilians. If something happens essentially in the tent, look at Nigerian communication, Nigerian communication conferences, that's how everything happens in the power sector. Then the regulator will be called to question. But we know the regulatory environment is weak, there are so many other things that are not done. But I want to admit that we can't compare the response level of the current privatisation with the others in the association. It's been, it's been massive, it's been costing, it's been corrupting. Current thing are incapable to sustain the tempo, holistically. For the next 12, 2 years, they will should start to, uh, start to single the level of privacy.
Yeah, Prof, I've heard people say we actually borrowed the Indian roadmap. What have we failed to do right in terms of this electricity journey that is not delivering the kind of successes that the Indians have recorded? If indeed they were the people that we copied?
Thank you. Let me give you five things we didn't correct. Indian had law, electricity law, that was meant to run the sector. But when we started our session, we had a law meant essentially to mitigate power sector costs. And I said that in the first place. That was why the good law, electricity power sector reform act of 2005 was not a piece of legislation to professionalise the power sector. It was meant to think about the costs. It's even by its name, we know it was a, a law to solve. We got it wrong in terms of law. Two, in terms of the actual privatisation, India didn't do, or say kind of privatisation or whatever. India do restructured privatisation. So in Nigeria, we privatise the entirety of the generation and distribution. We are lucky to put on to transmission infrastructure. So in India, the fourth thing was in India, money came in. Money came in because a lot of foreign investors, foreign direct investors came to India. In Nigeria, money did not come in. Nigerians did not realise the same problem from the privatisation, from the sale of those powers. Those who bought those entities, I've said it and I'll never return the same. They merely had proof to Nigerian banks for what we call acquisition funders. This borrowed money from the Nigerian bank in dollars to buy those entities and even had enough money to run what the financial resources, actually like the technical resources. So, and a lot of Nigerian banks were for them that we observed were literally exposed to power sector money, even in excess of simple jointment. And we now said those five banks would go back, so four went back. So that is why Nigerian power sector, which dispose and general, they are struggling. There's a major debt over and over again. It's not looking and the way they're running is not transparent. So money did not come in. So they must have pointed this application to finance those and to buy those entities when dollar was worth 16 to 16 to Naira. Now, you will now need to service your debt because you are not going to feed Nigerians in Naira. That was why the act were just tariff and keep adjusting tariff to refer the foreign exchange rate. And that's not going to be realistic because it will get to a level when generating electricity through your diesel and the, and the petrol will be, might be cheaper. So a lot of companies just simply abandoned the grid. A lot of companies just started abandoning, uh, power for grid. It started with the use of, it started with the use of captive and the air of good rejection. But this was when they get this post, nobody was going to buy at, at, at the rate of the, the risk of it. So that is a lot of challenges in this sector that worries the way of the Indian model. So aside of that, we now started focusing on the transmission like India. So we now transplanted model, running, running. Because India didn't have that monopoly of market. There are the number of companies that are generating, transported and distributed in India. India was, India already created a kind of competitive electricity market. Nigeria was not a competitive electricity market. Because when the power sector was challenged, the Nigerian government set up EMBE. EMBE was Nigerian power electricity trading P S E. The intention was, oh, we did it, it was essentially gas-fired that. So then the, the gas companies started complaining that they were making losses. So they couldn't make talk with their domestic gas application, which means that they should produce gas and set aside a quantum for local market for the purpose of the power sector. And they say, hey, we are not further this, there's no, we can discharge our domestic gas organization because this gas is an internationalised product, it's not as soon as the others. So the, the worrying compliance, so nobody was ready to send gas to the Nigerian power sector because they were not sure of their legacy and money. Because almost all the dispos are technically sovereign as we speak. A lot of them are also under the civil, under the, so when there was the challenge in the power sector, EMBE stepped in. So federal government was now like a guarantee, meaning whatever gas is bought is sold to EMBE. EMBE will now give to the discourse. And the discourse was still not able to enforce the, the, the appropriate electricity that is collected there. So EMBE was running by the universal government, now was not, was not giving any management of other administration systems. And I think they are, are...
Okay, all right, well, we apologise for the bad audio. Okay, but looking at all of the things he's said and the issue about...
Hopefully we can go back to...
Yeah, hopefully we can actually get back with Professor Yemi Okere. But i- in short, what are your takeaways?
Well, one big takeaway for me from what he told us is if we want to copy an idea,
Okay.
we have to copy it properly. We had that we borrowed, or we copied
The Indian model.
Our power roadmap from India. But in terms of the excellence of execution, the Indians have shown us that they are way better. In fact, they continue to add more megawatts every year. They are adding it because India is a big industrialised nation. They know that they need power supply. Without power supply, consistent power supply, they can't stay at the level they, they are as an industrialised nation. So they are adding thousands of megawatts
Every year.
Each year, they are adding it, they've sustained it like that over time. So in our own case, we are not making progress. We do on the average 3,500 to 4,000 megawatts.
And we do that forever.
We have not been able to at least get to 6,000 megawatts or 7,000. We've not been able to do that. So how, how can we grow as a nation?
Some have blamed it on the labidated infrastructure.
There are all kinds of problems.
Should that be like a state of emergency?
What I have consistently said is, let's not blame discourse alone. Because Nigerians, they don't look at this problem holistically. Oh, it's the discourse. The discourse are the interface between us ordinary people and the power sector and the entire power sector. People don't talk about the gencos. People hardly talk about the...
T C N. Transmission.
And if you do not sort out the transmission leg, you are wasting your time. So when people want to talk, it is discourse because it's discourse that are collecting money from them. I agree, the discourse have their issues.
They have their issues too.
They have their issues, we need to...
You're not giving us for three days.
We need to, well, you don't know how much was generated, how much was willed to them.
And I'm supposed to be banned there?
Oh, the ban there, it's not everywhere that it's working. I've never banned nobody. But I, so I think since like around 2:00 PM yesterday, they took light on my house and they didn't bring it until I left house today around 11.
They've not given, my own place at Tomoli, they've not given us for three days.
But sometimes we will hear the minister saying electricity has improved, that people are not buying petrol the way they used to buy.
And Nigerians keep wondering.
I don't know where it's leaving.
My own takeaway from what Prof said, my own takeaway from what Prof said is that, like you said, we wanted to copy the roadmap from India, but that in India, the policy they put in place attracted a lot of investment.
Yes.
Whereas in our own case, the people who bought this in the privatisation, they don't bring in any investment. They just went to bank to collect load.
Now they have the infrastructure, but they don't have the money to run it.
Exactly, all right, professor is back. We apologise the audio, we had issue hearing you. But I want you to quickly land on your thoughts before we ask you our next question.
Thank you. So I said the Nigerian government now has to be intervening, giving money to Nigerian power electricity trading P S E to be able to buy gas and give to the gencos.
Gencos.
And the gencos are not able to appropriately invoice the gas that were given to them, the power that were given to them, they were still running at a loss. So federal government now started spending much more in a supposedly privatised power sector. That did not happen in India. The last point on that, because I said five issues that happened. In India, I said India did not do, or say kind of privatisation. So in India, when Nigeria wanted to manage the transmission infrastructure, I had a problem with that because I actually wrote in 2016 when they brought Manitoba Hydro International. Manitoba Hydro was a small company in Canada in charge of transmission infrastructure in the region of Manitoba. Manitoba was about, let's say about less than 10 million. And it was the Manitoba I do know that was in charge of the 10 million. So we now brought that small company to put my money, transmission infrastructure to a country of well over 200 million. So, and the template they were going to run was not going to be sustainable. So when I shouted, I criticised that because I said the transmission services contract, transmission management contract that Manitoba was going to implement in Nigeria was not going to be successful. So because nobody was listening to me, so I decided to put pen to paper. I wrote an article specifically on Manitoba Hydro in Nigeria and I opted to publish it in the universe of Manitoba legend so that the Manitoba holders in Canada will get that because also have an opportunity. So what I predicted as my, my, at the, at the transmission management contract of Manitoba Hydro with the Nigerian government, what I predicted happened in three months. So Manitoba Hydro left. Then after they brought Siemens. I said Siemens was still going to go in the way of Manitoba because I wasn't as optimistic as the miracle that Siemens was going to do. The same thing also happened in the case of Siemens. So we always transplant this model. We are fond of transplanting templates and models in Nigeria without adapting them to our peculiar specific situation. So to those challenges, there are so many other stories. Let me pause for now in case I have other...
Prof, I, I want to move on, I wanted to talk more on the Siemens, Siemens contract because when they first mentioned Siemens, I think under Bouari, everybody thought that will solve the problem and it failed, why?
Thank you. Siemens failed because of the Nigerian factor. I, I want to speak reference to that. Myself and Rewani were respected economists who are in another station. It was very optimistic as Siemens was talking from the point of view of, of the business arranger for, for an economist. I was talking from the point of view of the lawyer and, and electricity law and regulation specialist. And I knew what was going to happen. So Siemens had an agreement with the Nigerian government, similar to what we had in case of... Then some funny things happened. I don't want to say that online. Some said information was bad, some said some school path politicians influence in Siemens' direction. Siemens was to do A, B, C, but then they ended up agreeing to do X, Y, Z and they paid there for S, Y, A, B, C, X, A, B, C, D, E, G. And the, the, the realities didn't quite align. So and one of the first steps taken by President Bala when he went to Germany, or do you want to see the German chancellor to talk about this Siemens thing? And I, I said, well, nothing would my stick, my, nothing would, I don't see anything good coming out of the Siemens deal. I really, I really appreciate the effort of the president. But then those were these stop before he came on board and they couldn't reverse it. I think the way hard of this is to go round and not, is we have to go for another land of re-acquisition and refinancing of those entities. Those were my solutions almost 20 years ago. I'd say so almost 18 years, 16 years ago, when the matter started. We need to go round another land of acquisition financing. Two, we now need states to come on board forcefully to start to play in this film. Because the the direction we're going, I don't expect federal government to give open money into supposedly privatized power sector. Government has 40 percent stakes in all these entities. What is happening to the stakes of the federal government because most of the finances are holding it for us under most of the financial corporate.
Okay.
With Nigerian government has a stake in that. So we need to download the shares of the Nigerian government maybe to like 30 percent so that we can sell to serious minded players to have controlling shares and deep things. Stage two should come on board, federal government cannot continue to be sustaining the power sector. When stage comes on board, it becomes competitive.
Okay, well, I was about to, well, anyway, he he made a lot of points, okay, that that anyways.
There's a professor.
Exactly, there's a professor, exactly. Anyway, that was Professor Yemi Okere. All right, Professor, thank you so much for having this conversation with us. Professor Yemi Okere, S E N, Professor of Energy and Electricity Law, University of Lagos. Thank you so much for joining us on Journalist Hangout. Okay, B K, if you have a chance to face, you know, have a face-to-face with the president right now on the issue of the power sector, just in one minute, what would you tell him?
I'll I'll need more than one minute.
I know, I know, but just sum it up.
You know, it's unfortunate that some of our leaders behave like they don't love the country. Siemens has no business coming here to do electricity because it does not have the track record. If you go back, some of the things that I had talked about more than two years ago.
Yeah, I remember you said you didn't believe in them.
I didn't expect, because they don't have the track record. They can do fantastic equipment for running power in a country. That's not where they are strong. Siemens can build for you giant equipment that can stand the test of time, but it does not mean that in terms of administering the power sector that it has a good record. No, I don't know how the idea came. I don't know how the idea came, but we are in Nigeria and we are all suffering the this problem.
So what are the quick wins here that the federal government can consider?
I think it is the off-grid solutions is the best. Look, the rural areas, off-grid solutions will serve the rural areas. They don't need the kind of electricity that big companies need. The dango taste of this water, those ones don't need. So let's use solar, for example, renewable energy generally, use it to serve people in the rural areas. You know, in some of those production hubs, where they do, Gary do, you see, it should just be fine. And then I don't also think that electricity needs to be as expensive as it is in the country. You look at this band, A band, whatever that is, electricity has become very expensive, more expensive than even the, even the American average.
They're taking home my salary and I don't see I have like.
And people still don't enjoy because it's not, see, the discourse will only give you from what they were supplied.
Supplied, yeah.
And sometimes the discourse too will not supply to places where they are not sure they will be paid.
Okay.
That's why the all of those places where you have plenty of thugs and other bad people, they usually don't give them electricity. Because how do you collect?
The money, exactly.
You supply them, but how do you evacuate your money? So it's a it's a big problem.
It's a very big problem.
It's, I think we need square pegs and who's put, somebody who is very knowledgeable about that set to put him in charge.
In charge.
Don't, that is not a place where you put somebody who's a banker or who a journalist. Put somebody, put a professional, somebody who understands the business.
The business.
Look at what Batunaji has done. I'm not saying necessarily must bring him back, but I'm saying put a professional who have a good grasp of the entire sector, somebody who is experienced, who's been to India, who's been to different places and will be able to use some of the ideas that he has picked up from those places. Don't, it is a critical sector, don't bring someone who will come and be learning on the job, no.
That's not, that's not it, that's not it, maybe just in 60 seconds.
If I have, if I have, if I have opportunity to face the president, I will tell him to invite Professor Okere to 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 exchange ideas with him as to how they can improve the power sector.
Cross-fertilization of ideas.
He told us, ah, he's been writing about it 16 years ago.
Yes, for years.
To solve the problem. So the president should invite him and try to, or the minister of power should invite him and try to engage him.
Exactly.
As to the best way.
The best way to run it. But anyway, it's a fine place for us to leave it. Mayor, thank you very much and B K, thank you so much. But before we go, I just want to wish someone a happy birthday, a famous gospel musician.